Whoops, nope. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, February 23, 2023, at 5:34 PM. A quorum of the Board are physically present, and we have Trustee Kaufman joining us via Zoom at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Great, having a, let me check one thing real quick, sorry. Is Christine here? No. Okay. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The emotion, the motion passes unanimously. All right, so tonight, we have a public hearing. This, next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This is a public hearing on the district annual report, which we're required to do every year, and so during public comment, folks can comment publicly pertaining to the 2021-22 Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. Tonight, we have eight people who left a recorded message and now in person. We will now play the recorded message for messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Hello, this public comment is regarding the 5:30 PM hearing on the district's academic performance report. My name's Elizabeth Ream. This is a complaint. I'm calling because AISD has released their major projects list through 2028, and Barton Hills Elementary was not on it. If you look at that academic performance report, you're going to see very high achievement at Barton Hills Elementary. It's a wonderful local school. I have two young children that I really hope will attend this school, which we're zone two, and it's also really important that people be able to transfer to this school. They're minor upgrades only on this major projects list, and this looks like a bold movement towards closing Barton Hills Elementary, which again, if you look at that performance report, has excellent scores. It's essential to the neighborhood, and transfers and local students need to be able to attend this school. We need the transfers to be unfrozen for next year, and portable space must be counted toward the school capacity calculations. Thank you.
My name is Anne Allensworth. I'm a parent at Barton Hills Elementary. This comment is for the public hearing related to the Texas Academic Performance Report. Barton Hills Elementary contributes to the exceptional performance you see in the 2021-2022 Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. Among all subjects, our campus performed at 92%, well above the district average of 73% for the approaches grade level standard. For mastering each grade level among all subjects, Barton Hills scored a 56%, while the district average was a mere 27%. Because we have capacity on our campus, both in our permanent school building and in our permanent, or excuse me, and in our portable classrooms, and also capacity within individual classrooms, as we are well below the state mandated student teacher ratios, we hope the Board will reconsider reinstating transfers to our campus next year so that more AISD students can enjoy our community and contribute to an even better academic performance report in 2023. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Cluey, a resident of Barton Hills and mother of three young children. I am commenting on the TAPR to be discussed tonight in the public hearing. My husband and I want desperately to support the public school system sending our children here when they are of age. We moved to this neighborhood, Barton Hills, because of the exceptional performance that Barton Hills Elementary continues to have on the Texas Academic Performance Reports and on STAR tests. We continue to see that Barton Hills Elementary is contributing to that exceptional performance across pretty much every category, and because we have capacity on campus, both in our permanent school buildings and in our portable classrooms, we would really implore the Board to consider reinstating transfers to our campus next school year so that more AISD students can enjoy this wonderful community and can contribute to an even better academic performance report in '23. This year, my daughter, who is at preschool at Athena Monastery, will not be able to have kindergarten with a lot of her classmates who have chosen to do kindergarten this year with, at Athena. They will no longer be able to attend next year as first graders. We hope you can reconsider. Thank you.
This is Rita Hewitt, parent of students at Barton Hills Elementary. I'm calling on the Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. The students at Barton Hills Elementary have performed exceptionally well in building and in portable classrooms today, as noted in the most recent TA report card for Barton Hills Elementary and rolled into the Texas Academic Performance Report card that the Board is reviewing today. Among all subjects, our campus performed 92%, well above the district average of 73% for approaching grade level for above on assessment. For mastering each grade level among all subjects, Barton Hills scored 56%, while the district average is 27%. We're asking the Board Superintendent Segura to include our stellar academic performance as an additional discretionary factor, and we should not be frozen to transfers. We shall continue to allow transfers so that our community can continue to foster and guide students to reach their full potential and achieve high academic performance and contribute to an even better academic performance report for the state in 2023. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lori Powell. I'm a parent of a student at Barton Hills Elementary. I am calling to discuss the Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. Barton Hills Elementary contributes to the exceptional performance you see in the 2021-2022 Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. Among all students, our campus performed at 92%, way above the district average of 73% for approaches grade levels or above on assessment. For mastering each grade level among subjects, Barton Hills scored 56%, while the district's average is 27%. Because we have the capacity on campus, both in our permanent school building and our portable classrooms and within individual classrooms, we are well below the maximum student teacher ratios. We hope that the Board will reconsider instating transfers to our campus for the next school year. I repeat, we would like to reinstate transfers to the Barton Hills Elementary campus for the next school year so that more AISD students can enjoy our community and contribute to an even better academic performance report in 2023. Thank you for your time.
This is Maggie Coco, resident of Barton Hills neighborhood and a parent of a Barton Hills Elementary kindergartner, and I am commenting on the Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. We are so proud of Barton Hills Elementary's performance in this recent academic performance report. We would love to ensure future excellence by lifting the transfer freeze for the upcoming school year. Our transfers are a core factor in our stellar academic achievements. Please consider opening our wonderful school back up to transfers so that we may continue such exceptional performances. Thank you.
This is Jenny Woolsey. I'm a parent of students at Barton Hills Elementary. I'm commenting on the Annual Texas Academic Performance Report. The students at Barton Hills have performed exceptionally well in the building and in portable classrooms, and today, as noted, is the most recent TA report card for Barton Hills Elementary enrolled into the Texas Academic Performance Report card that the Board reviewed today. We're asking Superintendent Segura to update the record now that his own staff has explained that our campuses, like Ridgetop, had other discretionary factors given to their capacity calculations for transfer freeze decisions. Given stellar performance, our capacity and transfer decision should therefore include our student achievement as an additional discretionary factor, and we should not be frozen to transfers. We should continue to allow students to transfer so that our community can continue to foster and guide students to reach their full potential and achieve high academic performance. Thank you.
I'm Zenobia Joseph, an educator, calling in reference to Item 3.1, the 2021-22 Texas Academic Performance Report. I would just ask the district to be more transparent as it relates to the eight schools that performed worse in northeast Austin out of 11 that got worse scores, and also to transparently show the 47 schools that improved. This was stated in an article, February 12, 2023, in Austin American Statesman. I would also ask you to be a little bit more proactive as it relates to the zoning cases at the Austin City Council meeting today. There was Items 54 and 55, the Berkman Residential Project postponed until March 9. I would ask you to submit an educational impact statement for Harris Elementary, which has a C grade, and what the impact would be on the schools that are in that area, what we know as the old Reagan High School. I would just tell you that the Berkman project is proposed for 26.6 units on 0.86 acres, and that's for one and two bedroom units. Very few of these developments that are recodifying the 1928 plan have larger units for.
This concludes the public hearing, public comments. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Yes, Trustee Hunter?
Good evening, thank you. I would like, I'm a fan, love small schools, and one of the callers mentioned that they felt that there were moves being made to close Barton Hills. Can we have any response to that? What you feel that's happening?
Yes, I could certainly respond to that. So just to be 100% clear, there are zero plans to close any school. As all the work that came before the Board is part of the long-range planning process, as well as through the bond process, we're actually adopting a growth mindset. We have created a process and system that actually invests in smaller schools. You can see that, by the way, of how we're building some very small schools as part of the monetization projects, as well as some of the staffing allocations that we're going to be proposing as part of the upcoming budget cycle. So that is absolutely not the case, and we are working with the Barton Hills community to kind of understand better where those concerns are coming from. I know we had a meeting last Friday, and we'll have one again tomorrow, but certainly looking for opportunities to clarify and make sure it's crystal clear that that is not the case.
Thank you so much.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? Thank you. So our next item will be a presentation on the 2021-22 Annual Texas Academic Performance Report and the district annual report. So Mr. Segura.
Thank you, President Singh. At this time, I'd like to invite Jacob Reach up to the table and Dr. Hawley, as well as Carolyn Hanchin. Thank you.
Good evening, President Singh, interim Superintendent Segura, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to present the district's annual report. This evening, I'm joined by two of my colleagues, Ms. Carolyn Hanchin, who is our Executive Director of Accountability and Assessment, and Dr. Stephanie Hawley, who is our Chief Equity Officer. And we are excited to be here to share, as I said, our district annual report. So state law, state statute actually requires that each district's Board of Trustees hold a public hearing, which we just had, and review the annual report within 90 days of receiving the Texas Academic Performance Report, which we commonly know as TAPER. And we get that from the Texas Education Agency. So TAPER is a summative report for each campus and each district in the state of Texas. So we get one for Austin ISD, and then we get one for every single campus in the district. The TAPER reports for the school year 21-22 were just recently released, and it's important to note that most of the data in the TAPER report has been publicly available for several months, but we now have a report that has all that information together in one single report. The tests that we're going to look at in a moment on TAPER were administered in the spring of 2022, so that's the last school year, and the preliminary student performance results have been available since around June. Accountability ratings and final star performance results were publicly released last summer, and this data has been used in the completion of the district's scorecard and in providing the foundation for campus and district improvement planning, board reporting, and our performance monitoring over these past eight months. Thank you. So this overview is just going to provide the summary of the components that make up an annual report and a link to the items that make up the complete report. So our annual report for the 21-22 school year is already posted on the district website. It's also available to anyone who wants to come here to Austin ISD to review the whole report. It's a little over 2,000 pages total, so it's a hefty report, but we do have it available for anyone who'd like to come view it here. This presentation provides an overview of that report, and it contains links to all those required elements. So as we've shared previously and sharing again tonight, there's really six parts that make up this annual report. That's our accreditation status, the TAPER, the Texas Academic Performance Reports, and that's for each campus and the district, our PMS financial report, progress on campus performance objectives, a report on violent or criminal incidences, and a report on post-secondary readiness. This time, I'd like to ask Ms. Hanchin if she can take us through some of that data.
We'll cover each of those required elements of the performance report, the annual district's report, first being the district's accreditation statuses. Our 2021 accreditation status was not assigned in 2021. The commissioner decided that due to the commotion, that disruption caused by COVID-19, that 2023 would be the next time that accreditation statuses are updated. So all districts in the state receive that not-assigned status. Our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas assignment is the highest rating available. It's an A for superior achievement. And under the 2022 Accountability A- through F system, the district earned a high B with a numeric rate of 88. Our special ed determination status for school year 21-22 is needs assistance. A little more information about our accountability ratings. The district's overall rating of B is based on STAR, CCMR, college career and military readiness, graduation rates, and English language proficiency in three domains. Although the district earned an A in each of the two components of the school progress domain, the second domain that you see in the bottom three Bs there, we earned an A in both components of that domain, but we were capped at an 89 for an overall score because if a district has any school with a grade below 60 in a domain, then the district is capped at a B, cannot get an A in that area. And each district is assigned a special education determination status. Ours is needs assistance, and there's four labels available: meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial intervention. The Texas Academic Performance Reports, or TAPER, make up the bulk of the TAPER, make up the bulk of the annual report. The following slides contain some highlights of the district TAPER, and we'll go through these slides fairly quickly to provide a sample of the extensive information that is available through the report itself. There's lots more information available. Much of the TAPER report is related to performance on STAR that was administered in the spring of 2022 for grades, students in grades three and up. On each STAR assessment, students are assigned a performance label ranging from did not meet grade level to master's grade level, and you'll see that information in the TAPER for each subject and each grade level, and it's disaggregated by student group and in several different ways. The TAPER also includes some indicators that were called lagging indicators. This means that because of the timing issues in the collection of the data and the release of the TAPER report, the data are not for the most recently passed school year, but rather for the year prior to that. So the attendance rates shown in the TAPER are for school years 1920 and 2021. Our 20, the 2022 reports are attendance rates for school 2021 as 95.2, 3.1% lower than the previous year. Graduation rates are also lagging indicators. The district-wide four-year longitudinal graduation rate for this class of 2021 was 96.3, up 1.9% from the prior year, and up for nearly every student group. I think just two or more races was down slightly, but almost every other group showed an increase in graduation rates for 2021. And another lagging indicator, college career and military readiness, showed a decline for each Shaw student group in school year 2021. This was the year of significant COVID disruption, and students were, had difficulty. Many schools eliminated the requirement for SAT and ACT tests, and that probably contributed to some of our decline in college career and military readiness. The report also includes the district's enrollment and racial ethnicity profile on the fall snapshot date in October of 2021, along with student demographic information and enrollment by program. Also included is information about teachers and other staff in the district. This slide shows a side-by-side comparison of the race ethnicity profiles of teachers compared to students. And as you can see, Hispanic and Asian teachers are underrepresented in AISD compared to the student population, while white teachers are overrepresented in the teaching, in the pie showing the teaching breakdown. Teachers are also reported by years of experience. Over 65% of the AISD teachers have six or more years of experience. The financial data reported through the Public Education Information Management System gives a comprehensive report of the district's financial status. One of the notable numbers in the financial report is the amount of recapture funds that the district sends to the state, over $706 million for school year 2021, by far the most paid by any district in the state. Our recapture payment to the state represents 45.6% of the general fund. You will recall that Chief Ramos reported first ratings and financial reports during the September regular board meeting. Our campus performance objectives are based on the district's strategic plan, which can be accessed through a link in the annual report summary. In addition, performance objectives are addressed in the district's scorecard. A link to the scorecard is also provided. Our scorecard goals two and three address House Bill III goals for early literacy and early math proficiency. 2021 results for goals two and three exceeded our targets in every area except one, which was a goal progress measure 2.1 related to math, to map growth scores in, in math, I believe. I'm sorry, in reading, reading map. For 2021, we were slightly below our goal five targets for post-secondary readiness. Although some of our scorecard indicators are aligned to the performance of specific student groups, our monitoring reports include performance by all groups. This slide shows outcomes for goals one, two, and three by student group. And on this slide, we show the outcomes for goals four and five by student group. The number of violent and criminal incidents is also one of the required reporting components. Number of incidents in school year 2021 was extremely low due to the remote instruction offered during the pandemic year. So school year 1920, information is included to provide a more equitable comparison for in-person learning. Student discipline percentages remained stable in school year 21-22 compared to the pre-COVID rates. And in each of the last two years, drug offenses resulted in by far the highest number of disciplinary placements. Also included in the annual report is the status of high school graduates from the Texas Higher Education Board. 45% of 2020 graduates who were tracked by the Texas Higher Education Board were reported in enrollment at Texas two- or four-year public universities or independent colleges in the year following graduation. This is down 6.1% from the prior year. And this is a breakdown by student group of those students who attended Texas institutions of higher education. And also tracked is the performance of those students in that institute of higher education. 65% of AISD students who graduated in 2020 and enrolled in a four-year university maintained GPA of 3.0 or better in their first year of college.
This concludes our overview of the annual report, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Reach.
Thank you so much. So we're excited to be able to provide this report, but we do want to just remind our Board that the requirement from the state is to share the data, but we want to assure our Board that our work goes well beyond just sharing the data. Of course, it's very important that we're transparent with what's out there, that it's accessible to our families and our community members, but we, as a district, also use this data in real time when it comes out to make adjustments to what we're doing. And so briefly, we mentioned on how we've used this data to look at our scorecard planning when we developed the last scorecard. Also, our campuses look at it for determining where they have needs of growth and areas of strength so that when they create a campus improvement plan, they're goal-setting off of their individual campus data. But most importantly, we do want to call out that while there are some really great celebrations here, there's also some areas that we still need to focus on, especially when we're talking about our gaps for our African-American students and our students who are receiving special education services. And that's where Dr. Hawley has been really helpful in our partnership with that, especially working with AIR in our equity assessment, and I'd like for her to share a little bit about that.
Thank you, and good evening. We've been working with AIR since July 2022, and they've been digging through a lot of the data that you saw today. But one of the most important things to remember about the equity assessment is not just them unearthing what sometimes we already know, but they're also going to be coming with best practices, what's working at other institutions. And right now, they're engaged in a lot of focus groups and preparing to talk to a lot of students, but they have a real eye beam on this data. And those, we often talk about the gaps, but we have to stop looking at the gaps at some point and start to move forward. So they're bringing forward the strategies that we're going to need at the, at the school level, and hopefully some things that leadership, campus leaders can begin to do as well, and so we can start to see some changes. AIR also is looking at how we need to change policies. So they're looking at our policies, trying to determine how many of our policies actually may inadvertently support the gaps that we're seeing. So it's not just about practices in the classroom, but what we do here in central office and also what the Board does as well. So that's kind of where we are right now with them, and they'll be sharing some findings in May and June this year, and then a real comprehensive report in October, but they'll be sharing information that we can feed into our LRP and to our campus improvement plans along the way as well.
Thank you, Board of Trustees.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Trustees, are there any questions? Yes, Trustee Foster.
So thank you for this, and I realize that this is a very quick representation of hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of, you know, data and analysis. The piece that I think is critical, you talk about AIR's data collection and analysis going forward, and what we've got here, a really. going forward, and what we've got here, a really critical area that I don't see us diving into yet, or at least not as represented here, perhaps this work has begun, has to do with this sort of campus-by-campus analysis in terms of teachers' years of experience by campus, vacancies by campus, and other areas where whatever we're doing to tweak, reform, improve, if we haven't accounted for the reality of vacancies, absenteeisms, and then also disproportionate number of novice teachers, then I don't think we'll get anywhere. So, I'd love to see more of that come out as part of the analysis so that we can incorporate that into our adjustments.
Yeah, I was going to say that is a part of the equity assessment, so we will get some good information. And they haven't begun that work just yet, that stage of the work, but our community identified that also as an area of focus.
Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions or comments? Oh, Trustee Zapata, I'm sorry.
So, I know that since we've come back, we've all noticed that we have, mental health has been a real big issue in helping our, how students get back on track. So, I'm curious how, I mean, I don't know what we're doing now. I mean, what is the process? What is, what are we implementing? I remember that when we had integral care, the schools had a mental health counselor. Our schools need, our high schools need two counselors, middle school needs counselors. So, I don't understand, I don't know what we're doing to address that, because until we get into their health, health needs of students, we're going to see growth. So, I'm curious where that is in here.
Trustee Zapata, for the question for future years, I know that that's one of the items that we've listed is budget priorities to look at, you know, our counseling and our mental health for the future years. For where we're looking at the data, obviously, it's strongly connected with a lot of the student outcomes that we are reviewing. There is not an outcome that's directly associated in this report with connection with mental health resources or something similar, like when we were working with integral care, and I apologize, I forgot the name of the other partner, it slipped my mind, but we were actually looking at some of those outcomes of number of visits and how that may be correlated or related to other student outcomes as part of that performance reporting. But certainly, we recognize that it also shows up in our criminal incidents reports. And, you know, not somewhere that we want it to show up, our goal is to obviously decrease that, but how we do interventions beforehand to help students with any of those types of outcomes. So, I think the quick answer to your question is, based off of the report that TEA asked us to present, there's not a single indicator around mental health, but we know it's connected and it is a priority for this district.
And just, Trustee Zapata, to provide maybe a finer point on that, we can follow up. I see Dr. Twill Williams and Dr. Jane Ross back there, and we've had conversations about what we're doing already, so perhaps providing an outline, a memorandum that goes to the board, and then we can also share that publicly, just to kind of reinforce what we're currently doing and how that might inform our work moving forward.
Thank you. Trustees, any other comments or questions? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see the side of the table for some reason. Trustee Foster.
Thank you all for this, I appreciate it, and thank you for sharing, Dr. Hawley, some information about best practices and data-driven strategies that AIR will be sharing as part of that work to address some of this, because I know we have asked often, you know, what do we know about what other people are doing? What can we learn from our data? What do we know about what's working in other places? So, I'm very excited to start bringing that to us. And a couple of questions just about some of our lagging data here, the chronic absenteeism, the dropout rate, the CCMR rate that dipped during the pandemic, and I know that the data for 202122 is not in the taper report, but do you know if we have started to see that swing back up?
The monitoring reports in the gold, I'm sorry, the CCMR, goal-five monitoring reports are, some of those are current indicators, and I believe you'll get more in the report tonight from the group that's reporting on CCMR. So, we do try to keep up with students who are enrolled in AP courses, for example, and students who are, what testing data we have on the TSIA or the ACT SAT. So, we do have some more current data. It's not perfectly up to date, because some students come to us with tests taken other places that we don't have access to, so we can't get that perfectly, but we, there are leading indicators that we are tracking.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. And then, one of the things I really like about the taper is it lets us compare ourselves to the state, but I also know that we have leaned in very fully to disaggregated data, and the state data is aggregated in this report, and we see disaggregated for our own district, but not that side-by-side comparison. For anyone who's interested in really going deeper, has a special interest in students receiving special education, students or services, or African-American students, where can people find that if they want to go deeper into that data? I mean, there's so much rich information out there, so where would you steer people?
There's a state taper, just as there is a district and campus taper, so that would show the disaggregated by student group at the state level.
Thank you for that. And then I really wanted to highlight one bright spot that I see about graduation type and the distinguished graduation, that we have leaned in as a district to defaulting students to the distinguished diploma, and that is the one that gives students access to the top 10% rule at our state universities, for example, a lot of opportunities. And when we make that the default, we're helping our students have the biggest menu of opportunities, our graduates, and really requiring that extra math, that extra science for students who choose to remain in that. And just wanted to highlight that our district percentage is 87%, and the state percentage is 80%, and that that is a policy we made that I think is really bearing fruit. So, you know, policies do matter, and it's beautiful to see that reflected here, and thank you for that.
Any other trustees? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. Maybe my comment is actually a lament. These are the same numbers we keep seeing over and over and over, and I see the data, and I'm always waiting for the implementation, and I know there is implementation, but I just feel like it needs to be targeted, like more. I don't even know, I don't have the words honestly. When I look at African-Americans and students receiving special education services, and the one thing that really concerns me, because I'm a big proponent, again, the second C in CCMR, is getting kids career-ready. 2% and over 1.5% respectively for African-American and students receiving special education services. This is 2023. You can't even do anything with a high school diploma almost, right? There's almost like, that's the, that used to be like, if you got that, you got a good start, and it still is a good start, but we have kids not finishing. And I just, in my mind, I can't think of a reason why kids aren't finishing high school other than like a major life events and hopelessness, and my fear is that some of this is hopelessness. And I'm wondering, I know that we, I don't know the configuration of the, what are they called? They got a fancy name. Graduation coaches, used to be called dropout prevention specialists, and a big part of their job was to, you know, go knock on the door. I think as a, I just want to know, like, what is that department? Like, how is it configured right now? And you don't have to answer this, I just, I didn't have this question earlier, and I'm sorry for that, but how is it configured? What is their processes? And have we seen a difference since 2021? Like, are we getting these kids through? Because we have to get them through and then on, right, into some sort of secondary education, whether that's a certificate or college or, you know, apprenticeship with a local, a local here in town. But I'm just, when I see that, I honestly, in my mind, as a teacher, I'm like, do people still drop out of school? I mean, like, I'm thinking one or two, but 2% is high, especially when you have a very small black population, that's a lot of kids dropping out, and then 1 point, I think it's 1.6% for special education students, to me, and maybe it's not contextualized in my mind, but that seems really, really high. So, first thing I'd like to know is, what does that dropout prevention look like now? Or graduation coaching, what does that look like now? And then, have those numbers, like preliminarily, I know we don't have like the final things, but are we saying like, you know, man, at the beginning of 2022, 23, we had like 70 kids wanting to drop out, and we got them through, and only five kids dropped out, like just those soft numbers? So, I'd be interested in knowing that, and just more, that targeted implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees have questions or comments? No. I have a couple of questions and comments. First, I want to say I'm so happy to see that we got an A in my favorite TEA category, which is relative performance. We all have our favorite categories, but I bring that up because there is a lot of rhetoric out there that somehow charter schools do better than AISD, and the relative performance is particularly interesting, because it is comparing AISD with other school districts that have similar levels of economically disadvantaged students, and we have an A in that, and I can't quite see what the number is, but I'm just going to assume it's a good solid A, not an A minus. But, so just, I just want to say thank you to our teachers who are working so hard to make this happen. That's really, when I, when I look at how a school is doing, I look first at this particular metric, because it's just so important. By the way, Great Schools does not look at relative performance, they're just looking at absolute test scores, so FYI. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I wanted to second what Vice President Foster was saying about the staffing. I continue to, you know, when we see the same patterns for, you know, this is now my fifth year on the dais, they haven't changed. We know that the teacher is the program that's been a saying in our district, and so it is really, it's critical for us to know what the actual experiences of our teachers in our Title I schools, as you had been saying, Trustee Foster, as well as the vacancies, and I am glad to hear that AIR is going to be looking at that. Do we already have access to that data so that we can use it to inform our budget and planning for next year?
Yeah. Yes, we absolutely do have access to that data already.
And I'm just wondering if that is something that has been proposed to, or, you know, how you all have been talking about, how we might change staff. I do know that you all have been talking about it, so I'm really just giving an opportunity to share with us again and with the public on what you're doing.
Yeah, President Singh, Trustee, Vice President Foster, and Trustee Hunter. I mean, which I already described is exactly what we're trying, attempting to begin to do. You know, it's focused, it's getting those school communities that have been at the back of the line to the front of the line, right? That looks different, depending on what the needs are, whether it's staffing allocations, whether it's prioritization in staffing, whether it's how we, you know, look at even just the simplest things, whether it's, you know, operations or facilities, I mean, all of these things have to be considered as we support these schools fully. It is focused, and it's something our team has been, I would say, negotiating with, and as we move towards incorporating some of these elements into our budgeting process and into the budget, and then what policies actually have to be introduced to support the work. There's only going to be so much that we can do without the policies actually being amended to allow us to do it, because it's going to be different. It will be different. But absolutely, thank you for that comment, and that is absolutely what the team has been considering.
I appreciate that, and I'm wondering if we might, if there's interest in the board, if we might consider having an agenda item at an upcoming meeting where we're just deep diving into staffing at our campuses, just to get a better understanding of what that data that you're looking at is showing us? Is that, I don't know if the board is interested in that, yeah?
We can absolutely accommodate that, it's just timing-wise.
I know. When do we stick that in? I don't know when, but it would be nice to have this, have some movement on this so that we're, as we're doing our budget now, we're moving into next year. I know there's research, like, we could talk for hours about this, I'm not going to, but did you want to say something, Trustee Foster?
Well, I just, I guess, want to lean in and appreciate one particular comment that you made about, so maybe we'll call them pinch points, where I think that where we are in terms of transformative improvement, because transformative improvement is what we need in many sites, in many spaces, it's not going to be tweaks, it's going to be profound adjustments. And I guess what I would say, at least as Vice President and Policy Committee Chair, but also probably the board in general, whatever we can do to help. And so, if we can look to policies and procedures that can be sort of codified at this level that will support good work going forward, speaking for myself, but probably for others, be really happy to take the recommendations and do the internal work to come up with the policies that lock in the best practices. So, I deeply appreciate that particular, that little nugget of your commentary, and I think it's profoundly what's in order. So, thank you.
Thank you. Another observation, and I don't know if we're really supposed to be looking at the data in this way, but when I'm comparing graduation rates, so we're looking at graduation rates, and it's interesting to see that, let's say, African-American students, they went up a little bit between the class of 2020 and the class of 21, which is good to see. But then if you go to the next slide, which is their percentage of CCMR graduates, college career and military readiness, it actually drops by a few percentage points for African-American students, and so that pattern seems to repeat itself, actually, for our economically disadvantaged students and probably a few other categories. It's hard to see, maybe special education, I see that pattern, and also for Hispanic students. So, I wanted to see if that, if that's something that anybody had some insight on, like, are we graduating more kids, but less, fewer of them are college career and military ready? Or what, am I interpreting that incorrectly?
I do think the pandemic year was a big influence on CCMR for the class of 2021, the students who graduated that year. The completion of the industry-based certifications was more difficult if the students were not there in person. The, coming in for the testing for ACT, SAT, or TSIA was spottier than normal. Those are the areas where we get the biggest return for CCMR typically, in those, in the TSI readiness and the industry certifications. So, I do think we saw a dip there that we will bounce back from this year. Our college career and military readiness scores have really gone up year to year and every other year, and I kind of expect to see that, see that bounce back.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And then I had a final comment, it was kind of, this is something that has been brought up a few times, but I just wanted to shine a light when we're talking about our violent and criminal incidents and thinking about our stat, like the campuses that are really working with students who have gotten in trouble with the law or disciplinary action, particularly ALC. Is there any thought about how we are staffing, like, mental health or drug counselors, particularly at ALC, to help move the needle on some of these indicators?
Good evening, Trustee Singh, Board of Trustees, Intern Superintendent Segura. We actually are going to be staffing ALC with a full-time LMHP next school year.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so they don't have one right now?
They have one that is grant-funded, and we are going to pick up that on our local budget and staff that as a full-time position.
Okay, great, glad to hear that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from trustees? Great. All right, so, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Trustee Sepata.
So, do we currently have mental health counselors in our high schools? I was just curious.
Good evening, Trustees Sepata. We do have a few on staff, mostly as selected by the campuses, purchased by those specific campuses to meet immediate needs. They are not, those are not allocated by the district to specific campuses. We do have them centrally located and deployed to campuses, but there are a few campuses, I know LASSA, for example, does have a wellness counselor, so, in various spots.
Okay, thank you. And then we have our trustee, David Kaufman, I believe you may have had a comment.
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge what was said about the variation in the student results, and just to make sure that our public understands that this board clearly sees the gaps in performance that are present and have been for years, and that it is a huge priority for us, along with the current administration, to address those. And so I'm looking forward to this work collaboratively with the community and with the administration, for us to really make an impact, and to move well past these historic gaps, and to achieve great things in this district in the next few years. I do, with all due respect to President Singh, I do want to suggest that we perhaps retire the phrase that the teacher is the program, while teachers are certainly the very center of the work of the district, and that we need to provide them with the respect and the support and the professional development, and the growth opportunities, and the working conditions, and the compensation that they need and that they deserve. They're clearly the incredibly important factor in our education. But to say that they are the program, I think takes, it kind of has led us to this point where we don't have an academic vision, and we don't define what good instruction looks like in Austin ISD. And so I think that we need to define our academic vision, that we, that we do provide a curriculum, that we do need to define the programs that represent best practice, so that we can have consistency with the experience that our students are receiving throughout the district. And so I do think that we are heavy right now on assessment and testing, and kind of weak on OLG and curriculum. And so I would just suggest that we, that we continue to honor and focus on our teachers, but to also provide a program that can help them be successful.
Great, thank you, excellent points. Trustee Hunter.
To Chief Hosek, President Singh asked about the licensed mental health professionals, but she also asked about what we're doing, like, when I look at the data for ALC, I see drug offense, drug offense, drug offense, drug offense, I mean, it's just, and then you're like, fight, but then it's drug offense, drug offense. Do we have a substance abuse program at ALC?
Yes, ma'am, they do the INVEST program at ALC and engage in family counseling with the student that is there. To be honest with you, I don't know the cadence of that, of that program, but yes, ma'am, there is an INVEST program that is offered to students for drug offenses, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to ask the administration, not right now, I know you got your hands full, but I think it's super important. I'm not suggesting that Austin ISD, are you familiar with the recovery school?
The recovery school?
A recovery school.
Oh, not probably as familiar as you are.
A recovery school is where students who have drug offenses go, and everybody in that building is in recovery. Their teachers are in recovery, the system principal is in recovery. Like, everybody in that school has been where they are. And though, that's a, that's a really big scaled, but I'm just saying, thinking about staffing and having a section somewhere, I just, I think that's something to consider. When we see that that's an issue, address it, right? And so I don't know how that's best done, but I think it's worth a look at recovery, best practices when it comes to a recovery high school. I think, actually, UT has a recovery high school, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, UT has a recovery high school, that's right here in our backyard, for us to go and say, what do you do? How do you do? Let us, you know, teach us, show us your ways, or whatever. And I think that's just worth a look, when we have kids that are, you know, that are challenged with substance abuse, and then sometimes when we go to mom and dad, we're like, oh, mom and dad are struggling with substance abuse also. So just to kind of like, help us get a better foothold in helping our kiddos. Thank you.
Trustee Singh, I mean, sorry, I was looking at Trustee Hunter and thinking about, Trustee Hunter, so, yes, we can absolutely explore that. I think one of the things that I always want to be mindful of is, kind of tying it back to Trustee Kaufman's point, you know, we have to have the academic vision, it has to align with our staffing policies, and it has to align with our budget, and also recognize that to get to a school like that, it's going to take a transition period. So if there's consensus once we get to that point, then we have to recognize that it's probably a two-year plan to get there, you know, to really think about staffing, hiring, kind of rolling, you know, that's just a process that we have to go through, so I want to be very kind of open with y'all as we had these conversations, that anything that we talk about and explore will take some time to do well, if we're going to have it stick. So, yeah, absolutely, we can look into that and provide some ideas and considerations as we move through the planning process and budgeting process.
Okay, I think we're good, anyone else? All right. So, before I adjourn, I just want to recognize, I think we have a couple of students in the audience. You guys want to just stand up and wave? I think I saw, thank you for being here. We have a scout. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate y'all being here, so we'll have to make sure and introduce ourselves after we adjourn. So right now, we will adjourn our public hearing, take a short break, and then return to the regular voting meeting. So Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Sepata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously, and the meeting is adjourned at 6:31 PM. Do you guys want to just kind of go into the, should we take a five-minute break and then come back, or should we just keep going? What are you, how are you feeling?
I feel great.
Okay, I think I'm hearing, oh, what was that? Oh, yeah, let's take like a two, let's take a five-minute break so we can meet the kiddos, and then we'll start. Thank you.